Well, good evening. Today is, that's mine. Get your hands off. Today is May 20, 2024. Six o'clock, Rowan County Commission meeting. We're glad that you're here with us. We got visitors here today, so that's always a good thing. We begin our meetings in the same way every time. It's a tradition of this board and others across the country. We're gonna do a couple things. We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance. We're also gonna have, if our chaplain will make his way up, Chaplain Taylor. We're gonna have what's called a solemnizing prayer. And that means that the prayer is for the commissioners. It's not for the audience. It's for us. We ask our chaplain to come forward, and the main thing is to pray for wisdom for us, because we think wisdom is the key. And so commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Commissioners, thank for the privilege to pray for you tonight. Father, we come to you tonight. We thank for the honor and privilege to pray for our county commissioners, dear Lord. We ask you to guide and lead them tonight. We ask you to give them the wisdom they need. Lord, I do thank for them and the work they do and the preparations made that nobody doesn't see all the time. They don't see all these things, but, Lord, we know what they do, and we thank for them. Ask to guide and direct them tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the highest principle of justice and fairness. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. As always, we're honored that you open our meetings. We appreciate your commitment to this board. I don't think we have any additions. Commissioners, any additions from you all? No deletions? All right, then, do we have a motion to approve the agendas provided?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then the consent agenda is before us. Items A through P. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
In a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have anyone for public comment? We do. All right, Ms. Connie, you're up first. Thank you for being here. We haven't seen you in two weeks. Thanks for being here. Yeah.
Connie Byrne, and I live at 216 Goldson Street, Kannapolis. I am just inside the county line, and I've been coming to these meetings for, what, nine years now, I think? And I urge everybody to do the same. If you want to know what's going on, come here. And today, what I would like to address is the upcoming budget hearings. I am urging you as commissioners to increase funding for education as much as you can. Our facilities need more funding. Our teachers need better pay. And yes, the state gives money for teacher pay, but it's inadequate by all means. I want you to lean on Senator Ford and Representative Warren to increase funding at the state level. We have so much extra money that you're talking about giving people a refund. That money should go into our education funds instead. We have too many counties across the state that are struggling to keep their facilities open and retain good teachers. And there's been a lot of discussion about the funding that goes for school choice, and I would like to share with you the comments from somebody who's always been supportive of school choice, who says that it's gone too far, because the funding no longer has any income caps on it. Families that make a lot of money and who are already paying easily for private school for their kids are still getting vouchers that they don't need. If you want to have vouchers, go ahead. That goes to private schools. It doesn't go to charter schools, which are public schools. And please remember that just because a charter school is a choice does not mean that their teachers get paid more, does not mean that their facilities are paid for, nor that their equipment is paid for. So please consider that going forward, and please do the right thing by our schools here in Rowan County. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie, and thank you for speaking tonight. Second, Cindy Fink.
Thank you. First, on behalf of Meals on Wheels Rowan, I'd like to thank you for the budget allocation for the current fiscal year. Your allocation provides meals for 36 homebound seniors, and that's a big deal. We certainly appreciate your consideration. We hope that you'll continue to support homebound seniors in the future with our nutrition services. But as one of the multiple seniors-serving agencies here in Rowan County, I want to alert you to the impending silver tsunami. According to data provided by North Carolina, 24% of our county's population is made up of seniors over 60 years old. And according to Chairman Eds, we look to add nearly 20,000 employees to our workforce over the next five years or so. There's a direct link between adding employees and adding seniors. There's a lot of anecdotal evidence, and if you ask our realtors in the area, I'm sure you're fine, that employees who have children entice grandparents to move closer to their grandchildren, especially those who live in a beautiful state with a nice climate. And why live in Charlotte, Mooresville, or Davidson with crazy traffic and high real estate prices when they can move to Rowan County and get some land with their home? The North Carolina aging profile for Rowan County ranks Rowan as number 20 in total population and number 20 in the six-year and older population. Our aging population is estimated to grow between 25 and 50% over the next 18 years. And at a 50% increase, we'll have almost 59,000 seniors, more than our current largest population segment today, which makes up 34% of our total population ages 18 to 44. Those are employees. These estimates do not take into consideration our growing employment numbers. What are these seniors gonna do? Where will they access senior services? Will they continue to search for the phone number for six to eight different agencies? We need an aging plan for Rowan County, and we need your support. Allow us to provide a workshop that highlights the various senior-serving programs, so you can be better informed about our current services. Where are these services offered in the county? In what niche does each agency provide services? Could we save money by combining back office services or creating an umbrella agency? There is more to share about senior services, and I hope you'll give us the opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fink.
Yes.
All right, our next item is proclamation for National EMS Week. Here we are. We've got all of our emergency services folks are here. Would you guys mind coming up? And we've got a proclamation that we'd like to read for you. Hello? All right, we're on. Well, it's an honor to stand here with our emergency services folks. He's trying to get us to get closer, but I don't know if this is the right group to get closer with. You know, for commissioners, one of the things that's pretty cool and valuable is we get to see really parts of the community and how you work that otherwise the community doesn't get to see from the inside. We've had hurricanes hit our way. I've sat in the, what do you call it? The emergency response center. They even gave me a radio to keep, actually, I still have it. I think they're looking for it. Yeah, they gave me a radio. I think we had a hurricane coming, and so they wanted me to kind of be in on what's going on. They took a piece of, I think, blue paint tape and put it over this button. Is it a red button? Put it over a button and said, "Whatever you do, don't press this button." And they tell me if I press it, then every emergency services person within 1,000 miles will descend upon my location. So I'll just, fair warning, before I'm done, right when I'm done being a commissioner, I'm pushing the button, just to see what happens. But, you know, we get to see these guys in the back room and the ladies and see the dedication that they have, and screaming up and down the road. We see our volunteer fire departments. You know, they're beginning to put things on social media, letting us know what they're doing. And they're out on Interstate 85, saving people from overturned cars. We've had our own fire departments out on 85 and tractor trailer run into the back of our service people. Luckily, no one hurt, but totaled two vehicles that are valued at, you know, maybe close to $2 million. So these folks are in the line of fire every day. They are coming into our homes and helping our loved ones recently. I don't think he'd, recently, my father-in-law felt a little dizzy, and we had folks from Miller's Ferry go clear across the county over on the Faith Road, you know, to help my family. And so we see it, and we see it all the time, and we hear it, and oftentimes, we don't understand how they do what they do. We know why they do what they do, and we're just really appreciative of it, because these are folks that just take on this task as a heart of love and service to this community. And it is selfless. Are y'all doing it for the money? I don't think they are. So we just want to say, by standing here with you today, that as we have been educated as commissioners on what you do, we want to just say thank you to you, because you are such a critical part of our community. And our chaplain prayed for us, and we pray for you guys and your safety all the time. And I tell you what I'm gonna do. This is kind of off the agenda here, but how about if we have our chaplain come up? Would you come up, Chaplain Taylor? And I'm gonna ask you if you would pray for our emergency services workers, our ambulance folks, EMS, our responders. Would you do that for us now?
I'm telling you, I appreciate them. I've had to call them. They've come when I've had to have help. I appreciate what they do, and I do pray for them every day. I try to go by and let them know and communicators, everybody know that I appreciate what they do. I thank the Lord for this county, for what everybody does to make us a good county that we live in. I appreciate y'all, what you do. I'm glad to pray for you tonight. Dear Jesus, we come to you tonight, and we thank for this privilege for our EMS folks, dear Lord, for all they do, dear Lord. It has to be a calling from you, Lord, and we thank you for them. We pray you'd encourage them, strengthen them, dear Lord. A lot of people just don't know what they go through, what they see, what they have to take home with them, Lord. I pray you'd encourage them, strengthen them, help them, Lord, with place in your hands. You protect them as they go out in all the things they do, thank for the service they do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let me read a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. Whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. Whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. Whereas this is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners has hereby proclaimed the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the 50th anniversary theme. EMS Week: Honoring Our Past and Forging Our Future. And encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities this 20th day of May 2024, Rowan County Commissioners. Thank you. I always forget that part. Commissioners, all in favor, say aye. Citizens, would you guys rise and give these folks a round of applause?
Commissioners, for recognizing EMS, it is a vital part of the emergency services in Rowan County. We do what we do just to make sure we're taking care of our people in our county. So thank you again.
You know, I don't know what the rules are, but until you have gone to our 911 center, which is like space age, and you walk in and there's all of these folks in the middle of the night, you hear the phone ringing, and you hear our folks answering all the 911 calls, and they're dispatching to fire, or sheriff, or highway patrol, or whatever. It's an amazing thing, watching these folks take care of all of the emergencies in Rowan County. They're a dedicated group, and certainly really just have utmost respect for them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to the EMS, too. I'm one of those commissioners that have had to call you several times over the last several years. I've been very ill, and I just want to thank you so much, because one time, you folks were locked out of my house, and I was collapsed past down on the floor. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your skill, your knowledge, your persistence, and your dedication.
All right, we're gonna move on to address appeal. Ed? Yeah, address appeal for 4596 Cook Road. Ed?
Good evening. I am going to hand this off to a couple of other folks. Pam Ely is our planning technician, and she's the one that's basically in charge of the addressing assignments. These come as a recommendation from the E911 folks or our GIS group that works with 911. So if I could, I'm gonna have Pam come up, and Columbus Hawks is here that can give some perspective on it as well. And then I think Mr. Lee, he is here as well. And this is kind of a revisit or a do-over from a previous meeting. We weren't really sure if you guys were wanting to hear from staff on this, or you're just gonna make a decision. We can do whatever you want. But since they're here, and since we're in the business of educating the public, let's go ahead and have these folks come up if you don't mind. Thank you.
Hi, welcome back.
Hey, thank you for having me. So what I've done is just a map, basically, of the whole Cook Road area. So it starts up at the top. That's gonna be 152, and then it dead-ends down towards Tiger World. Our whole goal, we were alerted that we had some inconsistencies, some out-of-sync addresses. So our whole goal was to get that addressed correctly, odds on one side, evens on the other side, and in numerical order as best we could, because as we know, that's how the ambulances and the emergency responders find these people. In looking at it, there was several different scenarios we could have done. One was totally renaming the whole name and changing everybody's address that lived in that area, because there is another Cook Road in the county. However, we didn't want to disrupt that many people, so we ended up making four changes, two at the beginning of the road that were addressed incorrectly years ago, and two at the end of the road. That was the least impact we could come up with. And that's pretty much it, unless somebody has any questions on the why we did it.
I think I've got it pretty much covered. Like I said, if you have any questions, I mean, we'll do the best we can. But the main thing is to get everybody in order, so when 911 comes down the road and sees 4540, they know that, and I'm just, I'm sorry, 4584 is before you get to 4585. So the 4596 was really out of sync, so we're just trying to correct that. We've changed the other two or three and did not have any complaints about it. I'm sure they did not like it, but they did understand, and we're just here to defend our decisions, so.
Alan, from y'all's perspective?
I think Columbus said a lot of it, but from 911 point of view, if you ever go out, you go on a license sirens, you're trying to find these places, especially if it's night, you sort of rely on the address that you can see that has up a mailbox indicator, and maybe the next house would be where you're going to. The way 911 works in North Carolina now is based off a center line, and the center line, the block ranges in the center line have to be right. If not, Columbus and I both get a report each month from the North Carolina 911 Board telling us that these things need to be fixed. And if we don't fix them, we just keep getting that email over and over again until something happens. And, but everything changed. Next Gen came in four years ago, about four years ago, and that's where everything went away from just paper addresses and stuff, to where everything's electronic, and everything's has to be done by the maps and everything, make everything right now.
All right, well, don't go far. So Mr. Lee, welcome, and if you'd like to come up and speak, we'd love to hear from you. And welcome back.
Last time I saw you, it was April Fool's.
Was it?
You said, "Do you have April Fool's?" First day of April, yeah.
Right.
I guess I'll repeat what I said before. I've been a taxpayer at 4596 Cook Road for 25 years. I have a shop, I have a house, and they're probably 200 foot apart. I have 60, at least 60 customers that I had to mail out invoices every month. They mail me checks to 4596 Cook Road. I've never had a problem at 4596 Cook Road, but I think I will if my address is changed. I have four trucks, which I'm gonna change all the registrations on those trucks, driver's license, insurance, taxes. Everything's gonna have to be changed. I don't know why I have neighbors that have two mailboxes at one house. One lady, she lives in the house with her son and his girlfriend. There's two addresses, two mailboxes right there, one for him and one for her. So I don't know why they couldn't put two addresses, 4584, 4596, one for my home, if they're worried about me calling 911. I mean, to me, that's a could happen. If they're worried about it, make my home 4584. Leave my business 4596. I see all up and down the road. This box right here came to my house, 4505. I took it to the lady's house, 4610 was her old address. And they say everybody's satisfied with it. They all start talking to people after their mail gets dropped off and their boxes get dropped. I asked the lady, "I'm sorry, this box came to my house." All her boxes, all her deliveries are getting up and down the street since they changed to 4505. And I'm sure 60-plus is gonna happen to my address, too. But it seemed like you had all these EMS up here. I think I'm getting dinged up on, so I appreciate you hearing me out, and whatever happened, happened.
Thank you. All right, any questions for staff, commissioners? Comments?
Mr. Lee, I wasn't here for the first hearing, but I want to thank you for coming in. I am a farm kid from Wisconsin, and I lived on my family farm for about 40 years. And in that time, I saw our address changed for the farm four times without moving. So I can feel, I understand what you're going through, but I will say that, since I wasn't here the first time, Mr. Chairman, that 911 accuracy is so, so key. And when you need them, not if, but when, from personal experience, you're gonna be glad that they can come and come to the right house.
I'm trying to read here and determine what the vote would be. Jay, are we voting to approve the appeal?
You're either voting to uphold the staff's determination to readdress or to reverse that and leave it as is.
Well, Mr. Chairman, before we vote, I would still like to entertain the compromised position that Mr. Lee talked about, which is to have two mailboxes. And as long as his home address is sequenced properly, I don't see anything wrong with his current mailing address being on the other mailbox. That way EMS can still find his house. I don't think they're gonna have to rescue any of his lawnmower equipment, so I don't think that that's an issue. But I honestly think that we should try to work with our citizens to make this as simple as possible. And he's done a great job informing us of all the issues that's gonna be created, as well as the fact that his neighbors have already made the change, and they're not being able to get their mail. So I think the point is valid, and I think it's in the best interest of our citizens to reach this compromised situation.
All right, so staff, is that a possibility? How does that work? Would you guys come back up? Mr. Lee talked about two mailboxes. I don't know anything about the 911. Are they?
I just want to make sure I'm clear first. So what he's proposing is that his home address would be 4584, and I guess this little garage over here to the side is his business, would be 4596. And I guess this little garage over here to the side is his business would be 4596. The only issue I personally see in looking at that is accidents can happen anywhere, especially when you're working on lawnmower equipment. And the addresses after that are going to be out of sync. So he's going to, the 4596, if something happened at that address, it's going to be out of sync. So that's the only thing I see.
One other thing I'd like to say is, so if he leaves the 4596 on an extra mailbox, well, for one, for the U.S. Post Office, there's supposed to be a physical location for each mailbox. So therefore, he'd have a shop. But the issue that I would have, and I think Alan would have, is if, if you're going down the road at night and you still see that address, the houses past that, the 4585 and stuff, may actually be a problem. Because they may actually think, hey, we've already passed it. They're going to try to turn the truck around and go to locate them that way. That's the only concern I have because I've seen it before. So I'm afraid it'd cause confusion.
Why, why would he, if he calls in, he's going to call in at his home address?
Why couldn't he call from his cellphone out of his shop?
He's still going to give you your home address. It's his cellphone.
So if you're on your cellphone, the cellphone's going to plot where you're at and it's looking for that center line data like I was talking about a while ago. And it's going to find the address, hopefully it'll find the closest address. And if that address is still there at 4596, it's still there, it's going to come to that. Works a lot differently than you said.
Yes. And there again, we're actually looking at the people beyond him. Like I said, the 45, what is that, 95 down here? So the 4595, I mean, if you were looking for that and you see 4596, you're going to say, oops, I went too far, and you're going to turn around. I mean, common sense would tell you that if I get to 4596, the number should be going up. But that's the only thing. And one of the things too, I'd like to say, we're actually, I mean, I know it is a pain and I admire Mr. Lee for coming up and doing his thing, but we're actually looking for the future too. So if he moves out or if something happens to him and the next generation moves in, then we're actually fixing the problem now, not in the future, wherein it could be an actual issue.
I just wanted to address one thing. As part of my job, the mail, big part of my job is the addressing and maintaining. And as part of that, when we do finally address things and they're done, every party's community communicated to, the postmaster at whichever city it is, whether it be Rockwell, China Grove, the post office in Charlotte, which actually, I'm sorry, regional post office, that's the name of it. All of the Duke Energy, cable, that type of thing. We however, cannot control a third-party vendor and what they do with that information. But I assure you that they received it.
One last thing. And I'll tell Mr. Lee this as well. We do, just like Pam said, notify most of the big players. But we've also told people that have had issues with insurance companies or what have you, that we'll be happy to write a specific letter to them. Or I mean, I've even got on phone calls with insurance agents or whoever's saying that, no, you've physically moved and I have to explain it to them and let them know what we're doing. We do go out of our way to try to help the customer fix the issue, so.
Well, as an insurance guy, honestly, I do get calls and they say it's just a 911 change, so we just buy, change the address. Anything else? So do we have a motion one way or the other, either to uphold the staff decision or to override staff decision?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we uphold the staff position.
All right, do we have a second?
Say it.
All right. Further discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. All right. Motion carries. So, all right, Ed?
Okay. Hopefully, this will be a little more fun to deal with. We have a legislative hearing tonight, what we used to refer to as a public hearing for case Z-0624. It's a request for a manufactured home overlay to be applied to tax parcel 751-015. General location is here, where the pushpin is at 1920 Hillbrand Road. And this request was submitted by Marilyn and Thomas Jim, who are the property owners. We start with a little background information. The Jims purchased the property in question, which at the time was a double frontage road, double frontage lot between Statesville Boulevard and Hillbrand Road. You can see the, the map is oriented a little bit differently so that it lines up with the survey to your right. But they purchased the property in March of 94 and then subdivided the property 10 years later. They sold the road frontage tract, which, or excuse me, the road frontage tract, the Statesville Boulevard portion of the property in 2007. But this action of subdividing the property caused the policy to be applicable that single wide manufactured homes are prohibited on lots created after June 8th of 1999 unless they're located in a manufactured home park or a manufactured home overlay district. Hence the reason for our meeting here tonight. So to continue with a little background, we look at what's happened in that area within about a mile of the property. And interestingly enough, we've had six rezonings over the years that have been within about a mile of this site. Four of these locations or applications were changed to rural residential. And if we overlay the current zoning activity or districts, you'll kind of see a better visualization of what's occurred. So these are our changes. Were industrial, as was this one. This one was changed from CBI back to RR. And then these were industrial as well. So we would say as a staff that if those four of the six that have been changed, there's a precedent of accommodating residential category requests. And just for general reference, during the 2000 to 2003 timeframe, there've been seven of these applications that have been approved in the past. And so we haven't had any since 2003. When we begin our zoning analysis, we're going to look at the plan conformity. This is located in the Western Area Land Use Plan in Area 1, kind of generally denoted by this little yellow square. It is in the highway corridor overlay, which is a half-mile buffer of Highway 70 extending from Salisbury's ETJ westward. The recommendations that we find for the highway corridor overlay are generally non-residential in scope. The ones that we pulled out, they promote building design, access to adjacent undeveloped tracks, and uses complementary to the rail corridor should be encouraged. And so the only thing that really does apply to the residential category focuses on new major subdivisions. And of course, this is one single lot that would not require further subdivision. In 1998, when countywide zoning was, was first adopted, the area that extends between Cleveland's ETJ and, and really about here at 801, these gray areas were zoned as rural residential to focus as a placeholder. So there were tracks that were there that either had agriculture uses or they were residential or just due to their size, then warrant an industrial zoning. And so they were left as rural residential so that they could remain as conforming status. And then the thought was that if people get ready to sell these properties in the future, they're going to aggregate together. And so they'll come back and look to rezone a CBI or as industrial. And so that's still the case at this point. The manufactured home overlay district, as it was established in 1999, was intended to mitigate impacts from single-wide development of 1 to 29 lots. And this only applied to subdivisions, not manufactured home parks. The key point that I would have you know is that single wides are allowed on lots of record prior to June 8th of 99. Again, the subdivision of this tract that we saw that occurred in 2004 really was the point that eliminated their vested or their grandfather's status. So that's why we're here tonight. The zoning ordinance further goes on to state that the purpose of the manufactured home is to provide for development of type 2 and type 3 homes in established residential zoning districts while maintaining overall residential, rural, or agricultural character of these districts. They note that there are potential impacts, but I don't think they're going to be seen here. Commentary from staff is that this is not a general rezoning. It's just really intended to supplement the list of uses in the rural residential district. Everything that's allowed in the RR district still applies. The only thing we're doing is putting an overlay on it so that the Jims can put a single wide on the property. You look confused, Commissioner Klusman.
Keep going, Ed.
Okay. So the question is, does, will it satisfy the conditions that we've got laid out for you? We look at surrounding properties. North, there's a vacant track here on Hillbrand Road. There's some industrial property north. There are five tracks actually that border the rail line. South, it's rural residential. There is a CBI conditional district property that was approved for a auto sales lot, which is not operating as such. But then as we look east, there's this double frontage track that currently or formerly was a race shop related to the Allison's. And then west of here, there's rural residential tracks. Continuing with zoning analysis, the traffic standpoint, the tract has 160 feet of frontage on Hillbrand Road. It's got an existing driveway. The rule of thumb for residential properties is that they generate 10 trips a day. And there is no traffic counts provided by DOT for Hillbrand Road because it's a local road. But we do see that west of the site and east of the site, Statesville Boulevard, has a 2022 traffic count of 11,500 vehicles. The capacity of Statesville Boulevard, according to DOT, is 35,100 trips a day. So it's operating at about a third of its capacity. To the north is Old US 70. The traffic counts there are 900 and 850. And the capacity there is 10,500 vehicles per day. So it's operating at about 10% of its capacity. As staff, we would, we would be of the opinion that this would have a negligible impact to the average annual daily traffic on the surrounding network. Again, we're talking 10 to 12 trips per day if that. Property is located in the Yakin River watershed. The minimum lot size for residential use is 20,000 square feet. In this particular case, the Jims have a 34,000 square foot lot. So it exceeds the minimum lot size. It's not a non-residential use, so it's not subject to the impervious cover standard. Interestingly enough, the mobile home standard also includes references to the special use criteria. And I'm going to go through these real quick, but I think you'll agree with these. There's six of them. Adequate transportation access to the site exists. We've shown that the tract has frontage and an existing driveway on Hillbrand Road. It's deemed satisfactory for single-family dwelling, whether it's a stick-built modular or manufactured. The use will not significantly detract from the character of the area. We've shown that the area is a mix of residentially developed vacant tracks. There's some CBI in the area and a CBICD for an auto sales lot just south of them. Hazardous safety conditions will not result. The manufactured home's going to be set up and inspected according to HUD standards and have a permanent masonry founding skirting. Use will not generate significant noise, odor, glare, or dust. These are not typically associated with a residential use. Traffic or parking problems will not result. And we said that it's got significant, well, we noted that it's got an existing driveway. Vehicle trips are negligible. Use will not create significant visual impacts. The manufactured home's new. It's a type 2 unit. It's got a fit shingle roof and vinyl siding, so it should fit in well. Procedurally, we mail notifications to adjoining owners on May 10th. The property was posted prior to the planning board. The sign is still current. It's advertised in the Salisbury Post, May 9th, May 16th. We would, as staff, tell you that this is a legally advertised hearing. And you know, the process, give you your, open the public hearing, close the hearing, develop a statement, and then the planning board's recommended statement of consistency is here. And I'm going to leave that up, so. Any questions? It's a lot about a little thing. But it means a lot to these folks, so.
I guess I get the quizzical look on my face because why, why originally, you know, back in 99 was, what the ordinance passed for outlaw or what, you know, to prohibit, excuse me.
That's a, that's a good question and it's, and it's a sidebar conversation, but I would tend to say that development pressures or things that were happening then are different than are happening now.
Also.
In terms of, in terms of the type and the, the amount of development that was occurring. Prior to 94, the county didn't have a subdivision ordinance, so a lot of what was occurring was lot creation on roads that did not meet state standards. They were gravel or they were soil roads. County then had a subdivision ordinance and that created the paved road standards. But, but at that time, zoning was not in place. And so a lot of manufactured housing developments were occurring throughout the county. And I think based on citizens' requests, the commissioners at that time came up with the idea that, that we want to slow down manufactured home developments, especially as it applies to single wides. I don't think there was a real concern about double wides, but it was, it was mainly the single wide homes. And that's why that standard is there. Interestingly enough, as you see, we had seven of these requests after the rule was applied. And since 2003, we've had none. So it's somewhat archaic and I can see the puzzled look. I mean, I think the Jims would tell you when they came to our office to get a permit, they're like, what do you mean? We can't do this. And so kind of helping them through this, through this hurdle of sorts, but yeah.
Well, the further question I would have is then, if we haven't seen it since 2003 and we go ahead and we do this tonight, and I, I think that single wides have come a long, long way. Does that mean then we're going to, in the future, allow this to happen again once we, quote, "open the door"?
Well, you're not opening the door. You've got, you've got a legislative process that we've gone through tonight to make it so that they can do it. I don't think one necessarily warrants us going back and pulling everything out and letting it go. But I think what we're doing is we're observing the process that we have to make it so that they, they can be accommodated. It has taken them 60 days, I would think. Is that about right to get through this process? And I think it's new to them. It's not fun. It's kind of scary. But I thought that they would be successful. But I understand your question, but I would tell you as well, I don't know that, that just because we have one application in 21 years that we need to, to go back and change this. To see what, you know, if there's a couple more that show up, then, then we've got some work to do and determine, number one, do we want to make it easier for them to locate or do we want to keep it the same or do we want to make it stricter? I, I don't know. Some of these things may come out as we talk about land use plan policies in the document that's being worked on now. So keep that in mind. That's a good, good thought.
My understanding though is that they're here tonight because of dividing the property.
Exactly right. Yeah.
And so the likelihood that we will have anything else come in here like this is pretty rare.
It, it is. And, and really, the, the idea was to focus on, you know, the bigger subdivisions of these things that, that happen. That's not what we've got. That's not what we've got. You know, when you cast a broad net like that with this kind of rule, you catch a lot of, a lot of little fish, too. And that's sort of the process we're doing, is trying to help, help them get through the net.
All right, Ed, thank you. I'm gonna open the floor, and we're gonna have a hearing now. Actually, does, would any of the gyms like to speak? Anything you'd like to say? Okay. Oh, okay. So we'll have a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this issue, Z O six dash two four? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, if someone else would like to, I'm, I'm happy to read. Well, we've got it in front of you. Is, would someone like to read the, okay. I'll offer up the following statement. Z O six dash two four is not consistent with the West Land Use Plan, but it is reasonable and appropriate, based on the following. One, it ensures compatibility with the surrounding area. Two, there is precedent, as the county has approved seven MHO applications from two thousand and two thousand and three. None have been submitted until the Z O six dash two four application. There's a negligible traffic impact. Number four, there are existing utilities in place with a groundwater well, an existing septic system. Five, it exceeds existing watershed minimum lot size requirement. And six, it meets all special use criteria specified by the ordinance. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second, all right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve Z O six, O six dash two four.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, well, thank you. Yeah. Y'all have been real gems. Shane, welcome.
The property owners, Rod Weaver and Misty Thomas, had applied for a permit to exceed the noise ordinance, which, as the board knows, that's a standard where you can exceed the amplified sounds of the county noise ordinance with one of these type of applications. So it's a second annual event. You may recall a year ago, the One Love Music Festival that was approved at the corner of Patterson and Brown Road. And for these folks, they have a Wisdom Way Inc., but it's a nonprofit organization, the Hands of Hope Mission. So that's, there's some proceeds that will go towards, towards that cause, but they're here tonight for the request. It's for June twenty-second, and it would be from twelve to nine. If you look at the screen here, this is Brown Road and Patterson. It's about a seventeen-acre open field. It's in present use value for hay. And the access point here, Patterson, is forty-eight-sixty is the address for the, for the property. But according to last year, they had a music event for, they included food, fellowship, they had various vendors, they had some folks there with the American Cancer Society for information. They had a blood mobile and different activities for the kids, but I think it'll be similar to last year, and they have a cornhole tournament that they're proposing, too. But as far as I could tell from their information, they have humanitarian work during the various crises, whether it be a hurricane or the wildfires. It was referenced, they also have passion for neglected horses, veterans, and then these type of mission calls. So that's the background of the, of the group. And let's look at their site plan. So from that same orientation, this is Brown Road and Patterson Road. The site plan doesn't indicate it, but their access would be from Patterson, according to the property owner. They still have an entrance here on Brown if need be. They have washing stations, porta-johns on the upper and lower end of the site. This is definitely not a to-scale drawing, but you have access here to the car parking and then also some overflow and overnight parking, too, for folks that come in the day before. Food and beverage is set up, according to environmental health, no concerns from last year's event. Also with Sheriff Allen, no concern with last year's event that he shared. Also, the speaker direction is pointing up towards Brown Road in the intersection here, but it sounds like they're gonna be facing this direction. There's a small patch of woods here, and it was identified that that's the direction of the speaker. I think they did have some complaints last year on the, the volume of the noise, so they rearranged things, too. And they, they're here to share if they want to add to that as well. But I did receive two emails from citizens out that way, and the reference that they had a concern with were the, I think it might have been the comedian that was there, possibly the music as well, but there were some foul language referenced, and I think the owners are aware of that, and they can share what they're proposing to do this year. But two public comments were issued by email to that effect, and I'm not sure if they're here tonight or not. But again, as, with any of these requests, we open the floor for those that want to share, but that's what I've been given. I think I covered everything. No nine-one-one calls from last year, according to telecom. Any questions of the board?
Yeah, how many people?
I don't know a number, but they anticipated the same number, so I'm assuming it's gonna be about the same crowd size. They also will have deputies there and also some, their own security as well. So they went through the protocol last year with the sheriff's department, and again, the good thing about these events, when they come back, we have a track record to look at, so they want to be a good citizen, so they'll get good feedback from those I reach out to.
Do you want a public hearing, Shane? Okay. All right, public comment time. Anyone want to speak about this? Permit to exceed noise ordinance petition. Anyone? Anyone? Uh, I don't think the applicants... Oh, yeah, come on, yeah, I'm sorry, come on up. Welcome.
Nobody told you.
Hey, that, that's not gonna work on us. We, we hear that all the time.
He's entitled to say whatever he wants to when he's up there.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you and good, good evening. Last year was a success, but we did have a couple complaints. Some of the neighbors, that we issued out nineteen offers for our neighbors to come, five showed up and had a great time. As a matter of fact, at the end of the night, one of the neighbors put on five. So with that being said, we are doing this not just with the music, but for community, to bring people together. Not only that, we're trying to help out as many people as we can with the crisis situation we got going on in different places. Now, the gentleman here, Mr. Mike Gaston, is the promoter of the, of the party. We had some complaints from one of my neighbors. He called me and said, hey, Rod, said, music is too loud. We can't tell when we own the seventeen acres, you can't really adjust and hear what everybody else can hear. But we did turn it down. We did have a comedian. We do not condone foul language on the property. That's not what we want to hear. That's if any of our neighbors hear that, they think that's what we're doing. So we won't, we, we definitely not gonna have that this year, but we do want to have the opportunity to continue with this event. Oh, by the way, we, the blood drive mobile was there. We, we had thirty-one people to give blood. We gave a hundred and fifty beds to veterans. We had the American Cancer Society passed out the pamphlets. We also had some, some therapy, I think, some therapy workers came that wanted to kind of ask questions about the veterans and stuff like that. But it, it, all in all, it was a great event, so.
Any questions for applicant? All right, well, good. Thank you. Appreciate you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none. We have...
Need a motion.
Need a motion to approve P E O one dash two four.
So move.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All right, since we don't have any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this good-looking group approved it. So you're buying dinner. And you're late on that.
We, we just want an invitation, that's all.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate you being here. Oh, my heavens, public road naming.
Welcome to my world. This, hopefully, is gonna be pretty simple. We do have two requests that have been brought to the office. Both of them are signed petition requests. All the owners of properties that will have addresses affected have signed off on the permits. I do have another, I'll get to that when we get to that one, but... So the first one is Cattle Drive. It's actually a road off of Ed Deal. It's already got a couple addresses on it. It's actually showing three. So it should have been addressed before now, but they just came in to put another home on it, and therefore they have went through the petition process, and the road that they are wanting to use is Cattle Drive, and that was approved by EMS and GIS. So you want me to go ahead and go through both of them while we're going?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. And that's just all family members that signed off on that. The second one request is for an area, oddly enough, off Patterson Road, that, it's kind of strange if you can see it, though, there is an easement behind all these properties that actually front Dorothy Road, so these houses will come in from this way. But there's an easement to go back to these properties. Therefore, I informed everybody along the road that this was being done, but none of them will have addresses affected, because they all address off of Dorothy, the one that's to the north. So the, the, there's only three families involved in this addressing, the people that live right here at thirty-seven forty-five, thirty-seven forty-one, and then there's a proposed residence going to be built here. And the name they came up with that was approved was Misfit Meadows Lane.
Hmm.
Questions?
I'm not saying a word. All right, we'll have a public hearing on this. Would anyone like to speak about Cattle Drive or Misfit Meadows? All right, so we have a public hearing, anyone? All right, if not, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve these two name changes?
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, interlocal agreement. How do you pronounce your last name?
I have no idea. Me, too. Evening, Board of Commissioners, hope you're doing well. Thank you for your time, and staff for all the support in preparing this brief presentation to you as a Board of Commissioners. The Rowan County Tourism and Development Authority, as a North Carolina public authority, is seeking to enter into an interlocal agreement with Rowan County for the continuation of an economic development project that we first partnered on in two thousand eighteen for the development of the Railwalk District. And that first project included the creation of the Rowan County Farmers Market, which is located in downtown Salisbury. What we are proposing is to expand upon that economic development project for not only economic and tourism development, but also community and public benefit. In addition to that, we're also proposing public safety enhancements to improve the area, which creates a corridor connecting the Farmers Market to the Amtrak station over the historic Salisbury Depot. This would run and intersect with many community organizations that are currently on the Railwalk, which includes Lee Street Theater, in addition to Salisbury Academy's location down there, and many adjacent businesses tying the area together. I believe they've got a presentation up here that I can quickly run through. I'm looking somewhere on the screen where this is. Where am I on the desktop? You guys said I'm up here. There we go. So just a, a quick presentation of the area we're looking at. So this would be coming in from Depot Street. This is kind of the area in question, where you're looking at North Lee Street to the north of the property, Depot Street to the south. Where my little mouse is right here is the Farmers Market. So the Rowan County Tourism Authority has acquired the property, which runs between all these buildings and then adjacent down through here, and have set in place necessary easements, easements to be able to do maintenance and structural improvements to the area. This is the property already owned by the TDA, which is the Farmers Market. Oops, sorry, going back. So this is just kind of giving you an entrance, if you were coming off Depot Streets and before and after what is proposed. We have hired the services of Ramsey Bergen Smith Architecture, who will lead this effort. Just some more images, what it looked like. The area will be called the Rowan Railwalk. Coming, looking back at Depot Street from the buildings, what it looks like now, what it'll look like after. This is when you're turning down the Railwalk, heading towards the Farmers Market. This is, again, continuing down that area. Kind of moving down, you're getting close to where Salisbury Academy shop is. Again, some before and afters. What is proposed here is gonna open up a potential access point, which will predominantly be closed. We've worked with the owners here in this property, so if we need to have an event or activity, we can have a third access to the Railwalk. Currently, there's accesses off of Kerr Street, and again, off of Depot Street. This will give us a third coming in over near the area where the motor part, where Rouser Motor is. This is looking at Lee Street Theater to your left. This is heading back down towards the Farmers Market. And again, just some more images of what it'll look like. This would be looking from the Farmers Market back down the Railwalk towards Lee Street. And again, just kind of heading back down the Railwalk, back towards Depot. And then this is just coming back the way we came. This is a view of what the center section will be, kind of create a centerpiece. One aspect of this project, also, you can see in some of these images, that is significant improvement in public safety by lighting, both Festoon lighting and additional kind of streetlights that'll be through the area. This has not been a, quote-unquote, "problem area," but with the desire to increase the amount of public traffic, visitors, tourism, and economic development, we think the public safety aspects are also important with this project as well. Kind of just another view of what the centerpiece area of the project will look like. And so this will be, again, looking from the Farmers Market. What we're seeking for your consideration this evening is we have an anticipated project cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. North Carolina general statutes allow for tourism and development authorities to enter into interlocal agreements with a public body such as a county or a city. We've done a couple of these here before. One, our older one, was actually with the City of Salisbury for the trolleys. And in our local agreement, the way that works is we will, as an organization, say we will provide occupancy tax back to the county over an extended period of time for the county to provide the funds upfront to do the project. We are looking for this to be a fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five project, and then would begin repayments for five years, beginning in fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six. The first one, the interlocal agreement, was constructed by the county attorney and approved both by your board and ours. And what we are proposing is to basically, is kind of a reworking of that interlocal agreement that was used to build the Farmers Market. We were actually able to retire that early. Our proposal would be to hopefully retire this early as well. And again, just for anyone from a public perspective, this would be the county providing the dollars upfront, but then us using occupancy tax, which are taxes collected from visitors, to repay the county those dollars. I believe staff has also submitted a budget amendment to you guys. Our Board of Directors has already approved the interlocal agreement, and conceptual is drafted by the county attorney. And then we would be seeking your consideration for approval this evening, but would, of course, be happy to answer any questions you may have about the project.
James, bravo. This is beautiful.
I wish I could say I designed it, but...
Yeah.
I just hired the people to design it.
So what potential to bring more visitors? I mean, do you have any, like, ideas of how many folks, how many more folks they'll draw? Because I know the Farmers Market has been such a boost, and Lee Street right across the street, so this is exciting.
So we haven't done the economic, the full economic impact analysis yet, and part of that is because the dynamics of the organizations in the Railwalk have continued to change, and there's also a little bit up in the air about the future of the Depot and who owns the, the Depot. And there's also, um, a little bit up in the air about the future of the Depot and, and who owns the, the Depot and, and what's happening with Amtrak. Um, but I, I will say just on behalf of the farmers, um, you guys should hear a big thank you because your partnership with us solved a significant challenge that has really impacted this community for years of where's the Farmers Market gonna be? So not only was it an economic development project that you supported, but it was a farm, it was supported the farmers, but it's also a community development project. At the end of the day, creating that pavilion and that structure, uh, and has been a, a big success for them. They had their best year ever last year, and they're already off to a great start this year. Um, so we, we plan to do that, um, and a lot of that has to do with the programming, but we have not done a specific analysis yet, predominantly because the dynamics of who's down there is changing.
James, it's just a part of public education of me and everybody else. Um, has, have your taxes continued to increase since COVID, or you still having a hangover from COVID?
No, we are not having a, a COVID hangover, although, uh, twenty twenty was a nightmare, uh, post that. No, actually, uh, things have, have rebounded well. Twenty twenty-three was a banner year, uh, in terms of occupancy tax revenues. There was a slight decrease, um, towards the end of twenty twenty-three, end of twenty twenty-four, but we've seen a, a strong rebound. Currently, the market's running about seventy-four to seventy-five percent, uh, occupancy, which is extremely healthy. Um, one thing of note, just kind of as a sidebar for y'all's knowledge, the, uh, this stuff the county attorney and finance and I have been working on a lot. The number of short-term rentals in the county is very high. It's over a hundred. So this, think Airbnb, VRBO, Booking.com. That is almost twenty percent of the lodging market now in terms of monthly revenues generating, so. Uh, we're seeing a continued growth in that area, and currently there are two, um, proposed hotels, uh, slated over the next three years within the area as well. So we're seeing continued growth.
And are you, are you prepared or able to talk about the hotel?
Uh, yes, well, one of them is a, uh, was actually recently, uh, at city council for a conditional use permit, and that was approved at the planning board level and then went to city council for approval. That would be at exit seventy-five, sitting in front of the Hampton Inn, kind of the, the vacant lot there. And then the other is, uh, the Marriott Property, which was a delayed project due to COVID. Uh, but it's still, the franchise is still secure for the area and the property is still secure. That's at exit seventy-six, uh, next to the, the vacant lot at Walmart. Kind of that almost two-acre lot that sits next to Cracker Barrel in the Walmart area. So, um, those are the two projects most slated to, to come to fruition here.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's been a good partnership with the county. I mean, you guys have been there for us for years. Craig has been a wonderful board member, and your staff has been excellent to work with, and whether it was the branding project, the Farmers Market, um, the other economic community development projects, softball. Uh, our board has always seen you guys as a fantastic partner and just working on many different levels and many different areas. So we're hoping to continue that with this, uh, interlocal agreement for another project.
Craig, have you been a good, good board member?
For a long time.
It's got some of the best attendance there is.
All right, um, do we have a motion to approve this interlocal agreement? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Can you make sure you approve the budget amendment also?
Yes.
My wife and I are recently down in Wilmington with another couple, and you've probably been down there in those boardwalks. Obviously, we're not on the water here, and it's a little different, but seeing some things like this happen is, is really pretty cool, so thank you. Um, so.
Budget amendment.
Yeah, uh, approve, uh, approve county staff to prepare and submit proposal in response. That's the wrong one. I'd already moved ahead. I was trying to think ahead. All right, so do we have a motion to approve budget amendment? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, James.
Thank you, guys. Y'all have a great evening.
Is that fine? I'm sorry. I, uh, all right. Anne, is Anne still here? Anne, welcome. This is a good one.
Okay, there should be a presentation somewhere. So, uh, thank you for, for having me on, on the agenda tonight. This is a grant application, a request to submit a grant application, and normally this is something that would be on the consent agenda. But because there's a very tight turnaround time, I wanted to make sure that the board understood what the commitment would be if we decided to, or if you decided to approve submitting the application. About one to one and a half weeks ago, I was contacted by an individual from the Department, the North Carolina Department of Adult Correction, Division of Rehab and Reentry. What they do is they coordinate, uh, local reentry councils. Um, last week, I met with that individual and then a gentleman from the City of Salisbury and someone from Goodwill Industries to discuss local reentry council and what it would mean in Rowan County. So just very briefly, what I want to go over is, uh, some of the background as I understand it. Um, and the proposed role for the county, basically what the state and the city are asking of the county, and then request the board to consider the application. Um, LRC is Local Reentry Councils. Uh, in two thousand and ten, the North Carolina General Assembly created what they called a Joint Select Committee on Ex Offend, Ex Offender Reintegration into Society, and what that did was it designated, uh, DPS as the state agency to oversee and coordinate local reentry councils, establishing them at the county and regional level. As of right now, I think there are nine, nine or ten county and regional reentry councils in the state and the, um, the DAC, the Adult, Department of Adult Corrections, recently expanded the amount of money that was allocated for counties. And they're, they're seeking to establish, I believe it's fourteen new reentry councils across the state. Um, the grant itself is, well, let me back up. The idea is to reduce recidivism, promote public safety through sort of a network, a local network that works together to help individuals and refer them to different services around the county. Communicating with community leaders, advocating for the formerly incarcerated individuals, providing education and outreach to the community and so on. This is from the Department of, of Adult Corrections, just basically a, a graphic that represents how the local reentry council model works. What they are asking is by submitting a proposal to this, um, to this grant, they're asking that the county serve as what they call an intermediary agency, and that's basically the fiscal and administrative arm of the council. So as a fiscal agent for the LRC, we would be, the county would be committing to for, as part of the, as part of the work, um, managing the budget and expenditures. It's basically establishing this new program in the county, and the county government would be managing, doing the administrative, the fiscal, and they would serve as liaison with the DAC. Okay, so for a single county, this is a non-competitive grant, so there is that amount of money set aside per county, and what we would need to do is submit the proposal. Uh, for a single county, it is up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for three years, so you would just renew it each year. There's no local match required, although they do highly recommend or suggest that it wouldn't be a bad idea. Um, but the, there's also potential to add to the catchment area, so if there's, if the county were to propose to serve multiple areas, um, the available funding is two hundred and twenty-five thousand for each of three years, and again, no local match. And through this, Rowan County would be the intermediary agency, coordinating, hiring staff, um, providing office space and so on. So there is a bit of a commitment there. It's essentially an in-kind piece with the, with the facilities and the staffing that would be provided. So what I'm asking, because the turnaround time is so tight, it's, the proposals due this Friday, um, and because there is a level of commitment and activity that the county would have to engage in as part of this, um, I just wanted you to be aware of what that means if you were to approve submitting the proposal. Do you have any questions for me?
And what kind of staff are they looking for?
They are look-
You know, is this going to take up all of the budget, budgeted money?
They're looking to, well, what they ask, let me see if I can go back here. Um, they're asking for two staff. The local reentry coordinator is that main point of contact, the person who sort of manages the administrative piece and the fiscal piece and so on. And then basically a case manager, this local job placement specialist slash case manager, who works directly with the folks that would be referred through the, um, through the LRC.
So you're talking about basically two people?
Two people, again, depending on if it's a countywide or, uh, more regional.
Who supervises these people, you know?
That would remain to be seen, and that's something that because the turnaround time has been so tight, it's been difficult to nail down that level of detail.
Are there any, we've been talking about this for some time. Or is there anyone in, um, any other organizations in Rowan County that are currently working with?
Um, directly, no. We have some upcoming programs that, that could be, I guess, create some sort of synergy with other grant programs that are coming in. For example, the Veterans Treatment Court, they would be providing, the local reentry council would be providing similar services that a Veterans Treatment Court provides. Um, probably the Home ARP grant, that's going to the Rowan Helping Ministries, could work with them because there is, if you look on the right here under local reentry council members, it gives you a list of some potential, uh, service providers or participants who, who could be involved with this. So it's really a community-wide effort.
You know, I've, and we've, um, many of you know, we have, uh, state and federal lobbyists, and one of the things we've been talking with our federal folks about is the issue of reentry, um, and it just, it just doesn't happen. Um, there are a lot of folks that have, uh, been in our, um, our jails, prisons, um, that want to come out and they want to do well. Uh, but they don't know how, and so we as a community expect them to come out and walk the straight and narrow, but oftentimes, um, they don't have that opportunity, right? Um, so how, you know, there, there are some businesses here in town that are really active in hiring former, um, convicted felons or folks who have gone, and, and, um, they seek out those folks. So, um, I, I don't know how we get those folks to a point of working, um, in a community to turn themselves around and provide opportunity for themselves, so they're not looking in the other direction for opportunities they shouldn't be involved. I don't know how we do that without having some type of people to help or structure
Right.
to help them do that. We, as, I've been having these conversations with you and with our federal folks especially, um, we weren't very, uh, far along in those discussions. We were really studying on how we could, uh, how we could do this Gemini. This is something that we've talked about, reentry. So now here we are, and there's a, a grant available. And the money kind of is there, um, but I really don't see the structure of, of how it happens.
Well, the state would provide training for the local council and a lot of support. That's one of the key pieces that I thought was important and that I think makes this, even with this really short notice, it, um, the fact that the state is providing this, the training for the council, the city has already been, they've already reached out to the city, they've already reached out to, um, I believe it was a woman from Goodwill Industries was also at the meeting that I was at just this last week, and kind of walked through the whole process. There's already interest and community-wide desire to do something. I think what this does is it just sort of provides the, the structure that you were talking about.
So if, if we approve this and go forward with the application, if, if we are not ready as a community yet to, um, administer and approve, I mean, that, that's a possibility that we're not ready.
Right, yep.
So, um, could we, could we decline a, a grant that's been given to us in, in a, in a way that is, listen, we really want to do this, but we are not, uh, structured yet to do it?
I think there is. I think that the state is very, um, eager to see these formed, so they are, again, providing a lot of support, administratively, training, um, to, to sort of facilitate the, the capabilities of the different communities, so.
What do they expect the hundred and fifty thousand to be spent on?
The majority of it, they want to see spend on the actual, um, service activities for the individuals participating in the program, so there may be, um, for example, a service agreement with, uh, mental health providers, things like that. So there may be some commitment or some agreement with, to support transit, transportation for some of the individuals if, if it's needed. So the breakdown for the budget is not very detailed. Um, but again, the, the the most important position as far as staffing goes is probably getting, making sure that case manager is in place. The coordinator is probably someone who could who could serve as, as possibly be appointed or funded partially through the, through the grant, whereas the case manager would probably need to be funded in full. But again, that's part of what the commitment is. Um, another piece that that they identify is this assisting and identifying and pursuing sustainability funding. So in other words, looking for additional grant funding and other sources that could sustain this in LRC beyond, um, the three years. This is essentially your startup capital.
So just, so I'm clear, this will be a county employee?
Yes.
I think, as you mentioned earlier with the Veterans Treatment Court, I think there's a lot of crossover there that could work together. Which, obviously, there's, yeah, it would be a different grant.
Right.
But maybe some of the same resources could be used. Cause I believe with grants, you can say certain percentages cover certain salaries if they do a certain amount of work.
Right, yep. Yep, and that's just coming down to how the payroll plays out.
So would both employees be county employees?
Yes. Yep, as the fiscal agent or the intermediary agency, the county will, would be employing both of those individuals as well as providing the office space and so on. So there is that level- So there is that level of requirements.
So Jay, is there, is there application and acceptance? Is there an opportunity for us to push on this if the, the application is received? Well, meaning that if we're approved, then we, what I, what I, this is something that personally I'd like to see us do. But I don't, I don't know if we're ready for it yet. Maybe we are, maybe you can tell us we are. But we're about to go over budget and this is-
Right.
Yeah, our finance lady's going, "What?" So, um, so could we apply? And then if we, if the grant is given, could we just politely say, "Man, you know, we're just not ready for it?"
And yes.
And then come back with a plan?
Yeah, yeah, I don't see that there would be a problem. It just takes working with the state to negotiate if and when that would have to be, that would have to happen.
Mr. Chairman, if we were to apply, and you say we're not ready, and I agree we're not, we could look at other counties and see what they're doing and maybe copycat their system to be able to implement it the next year or whatever. But I, I don't want to miss the opportunity to, for the funding, but at the same time, I don't want to take the money and not produce anything either.
And I guess that's the question, is, is there anything that gives us an indication of the fixed timeline for expending the grant funds?
The grant itself would begin with the new fiscal year, July 1st, and it would be renewed after that for two more years. So, our requirements as an intermediary agency are relating, related to, again, the, outside of the staffing, just, you know, making sure that we're in compliance with whatever reporting requirements and data gathering they have.
The gentleman's name that we've-
Um, Victor.
Local?
The local?
Local guy.
Um, that's Lorenzo.
Yeah, DeBose, is that it?
Uh, Lorenzo DeBose, yep. He's with the PD.
Well, maybe this board would, would approve the application. And then it gives us purpose of, hey, let's, let's move, let's make some decisions on this. And if we can use like Commissioner Pierce said, if there's other, the other successful programs up and going, we could copycat that. And worst case, you know, I, I don't know if we offend the state by then declining the money. To me, it would be, hey, how mature of it was Rowan County to say, "Listen, we appreciate you"
Right.
"Offered the money, but we're not ready yet, and so we're going to decline." I think that would be worth something.
Yeah, I mean, my feeling is, without speaking for the state, my feeling is that they would support, they would, they really want to see these succeed. So they're, they're offering the support and the training and, and technical assistance for a lot of the work, so. And they have the models and everything already set up and ready for the county to utilize. It's, again, a matter of whether you think that we're ready to do this, and again.
Is that, it's 150, is that what I saw on the other slide? 150,000, is that what it was?
150,000, this one?
Okay, so is that, um, okay, so that's for each year, right?
Yes, per year.
Like 450,000 for three years or, okay, I got you, thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion, the recommendation here. Make a motion to approve county staff to prepare and submit a proposal in response to Department of Adult Corrections to serve as intermediary agency for Rowan County Local Reentry Council and approve and authorize county manager or designate assigned grant proposal documents. Make that in form.
Second.
All right, other discussion? All right, congratulations, Aaron. All in favor, say aye. And we'll just seek to do the right thing, okay? And get with me, Ann and Will, I know we've been talking about this. And we'll see what we can work, work out, okay?
I will, thank you.
All right, Mr. Sunshine?
All right. Aaron, next page. Wrong document. Uh, there you go. All right. Presenting the fiscal year '25 budget. It's been prepared and according with Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, and it is balanced. The current budget for '24 is, that we're currently in, is $198,247,750. This year, the requested total from departments and outside agencies was $269,431,480, which would have been a 35.91 increase or $71,183,730 increase. The recommended budget for '25 is $238,598,704, which is a 20.35% increase or $40,350,954. Next page. Next page. So the tax rate with this recommended budget remains the same. The collect, the collection rate remains the same as '24 at 98%. The, the projected tax base for '25 is $20,125 million, which is an increase of 7.5% compared to the 2024 tax base of $18,707,900,000. The property tax, the amount of dollars collected that we will receive over last year will increase by approximately $10,980,000. Next page. The sales tax makes up about $40 million of all of our revenue. But the, the recommended sales tax in the budget is approximately 7% less than the actuals. And this is due to several factors, including inflation. Even though it's less than the actuals, it's about 4.4 million more than what we budgeted or projected. So that will increase in this for the, for the recommended budget is a $4.4 million increase. Next slide. Additional revenue in the budget, the building inspection fees, emergency services, planning, parks, and animal services. All the departments do a good job of comparing other counties when they submit the budget. None of our fees are, are out of line from other counties, the recommended fees. And even, even the new recommended fees are normally on the low side when you look at other counties. As of June 30th, the total fund balance for the county was $128,488,175, with $65,307,078 that was categorized as unassigned. The recommend, recommendation for this budget recommends using $37,380,395 to balance this year's budget. Within there, there's $1 million budgeted for contingencies. And then 29 million of the 37 million is to cover large one-time capital expenditures. So they're not reoccurring. And then there's approximately 9.3 million of the fund balance appropriation for reoccurring expenses, which is in line with what we did last year, even though the budget's increasing. This is, this will be a $26 million increase from last year's appropriation, but it will prevent excessive new debt. This is kind of a one-time, I'll just add, you know, this is something I wouldn't expect year after year. A lot of this is from the influx in sales tax during COVID that we didn't expect.
Aaron, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, all this 29 million one-time capital expenditures, does that include the ARPA funds and the, uh?
No.
opioid settlement for, for doing the health department?
No.
Okay.
That's not included. That, the, the $10 million from the ARPA is on top of, on top of the 29 million. So if you were to include that, it would be 30, 40 million. Next slide. So, so the one-time capital items in, in this budget is the Crawford building remodel, which is about 4.8 million. Money to purchase land for EMS station in South Rowan, which is 650,000. The Donnelly House demo, which is 40,000. Security system upgrades for public safety is a million. Then Craig, to answer your question, health department relocation, 15 million is coming from fund balance. But then out there to the side, you see the 10.6 million is ARPA, and then the 15 million is general fund money, which is appro, approximately 25 million for the whole facility. The behavioral health urgent care is 1,500,000. That's for the capital. And then there's an additional 500,000 in the budget for startup cost. The library building repairs is 54,000. That's for the outside of the library here in town. And then also to replace all the carpet in that, in the library in town. And then there's 3.5 million to bring all the parks into compliance with ADA, certain parts of each park. Then there's 115,000 for a storage building at Ellis Park and 80,000 for a shelter at Woodleaf Park. It was 75, but there's an additional 5,000 in there for additional items at the park. And then there's 2.5 million dollars to go to RCC. It's not really, I mean, it's not really, it's a professional service fee, but it is for one-time capital. It will be for a one-time capital. Final product would be the, the auto building. But the 2.5 million is to help them pay for the design of the building, which comes up to, you know, 29 million dollars. Next page. And if, if y'all want me to stop there to answer questions about those projects, I'd be glad to. If anybody has any questions. Okay. The budget also includes a continuing $600,000 budget for ADA transition plan. And this is, we try to do a little bit every year to, to, to be in compliance with the federal standards. Next page. The proposed vehicle, I mean, the proposed vehicle. The proposed budget includes 27 vehicles totaling $3 million. Emergency services is four vehicles, that's three ambulances and one quick response vehicle. Inspections, one vehicle, animal services, two vehicles, transit, three, environmental health, two, and the sheriff's office, 15. Next page. So this year, the county departments requested 92 new positions, which totaled approximately $8,889,700. The budget recommends the following positions, which the total cost is $1,454,304. Assistant county attorney, school resource officer, income maintenance worker, two, that's six positions. Social services supervisor to supervise the income maintenance caseworkers. And that's for the Medicaid expansion, those six positions and the supervisor. And that may not be enough, you know, throughout the, like we said last year in the budget message, and this year is the new thing. So we may be coming back to add more income maintenance work, workers for expanded Medicaid. Animal services, veterinarian. And then the remaining positions, one, two, three, four, five positions. Well, it's six, because one is a part, well, no, it's one, two, three, four, full-time and two part-time. So a total of six positions for the Rowan Community Center that we expect to be open. Hopefully, we expect the construction to be done by late August and hopefully open to the public by Christmas time. Next slide. The cost of living adjustment is 4%, which the way it's budgeted in this year's budget is 2% effective July 1st, '24, and then 2% effective January 1st, 2025. Next page. Article 46 sales tax is sales tax that the county approved over 10 years ago with the purpose of it being used for public safety. And this budget appropriates, if, if all this is spent and the sales tax doesn't go up more than we're projecting, the, the fund balance should be zero. Not fund, I mean, the remaining Article 46 sales tax should be zero going into next year, which it'll probably be more than that. And that's for the, the debt service, for the radio debt service to pay for that. The new telecom debt service, which is for additional towers. A new Western EMS, it's not Western, that's my mistake, I, I meant to change that. It's this new Southern EMS base station, 843,000 a year. We hope would be enough to pay for the debt service for that base station. Land purchase for, and that's, the second era shouldn't be a W, it's for the South EMS base station, 650,000. And sheriff's department vehicles, 832,000. And then the security system upgrade, 1 million. Next page. So, the education expenses.
Can you go back one, back one page?
Yeah, I was hoping we'd move past that before someone asked me to explain what one of the words means. Go, go back a page, Aaron, of the, this, this misspelling the station.
Yeah, yeah, station.
Oh, yeah.
Western EMS station. That's total cost, is that total cost?
Yeah, that's a little confusing. The land purchase is the total cost. The, the actual station is what we project that the debt service would be on that if we finance it.
That was based on, I think that was based on the number that was given at retreat for that.
How much was, the last one was?
The last one wasn't over a million.
Yeah, the last one was, yeah.
What did it cost to build the EMS station in Rockland?
I don't think it was over a million.
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking. If your land cost is not included in that 843,000, ain't no way in the world it ought to cost that if the land's already paid for.
Yeah, Alan, do you want to, do you remember the final number we came up with for that?
12.6 million, 15 years.
That's not with the interest, though.
Well, I mean, I assume the interest is built into the eight forty-three.
How big a station you wanting to build, Alan?
No, no, I mean, the, it, the, what did you say the total was, Greg?
Twelve point six.
I mean, that does include the interest.
Yeah, well, figured that, but I'm just saying.
Commissioner Caskin and I talked about a, a station big enough to have four bays on it for expansion and possibly being able to add other resources into it later on. We, we based that, per strip is five hundred and fifty dollars square foot, that's what Cabarrus County just paid for their new EMS station. It's right around six oh one twenty-nine.
Okay.
Things just went up.
Well, I know that, I'm just.
We use seven point five million, five years' worth of debt. Well, if you take.
So what you're saying is when you build this EMS station, it's going to have expandability to it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, because it's, because it would be two payments a year. Payment, like, year one would be eight hundred and forty-one, and the principal would be, I mean, sorry, the.
So that is only one payment happening in year one. So year two would have double, so twenty-six budget would be double that, eight forty-three. That would do it in five years.
Three, four, and five.
Yeah.
We got to vote on building that, right?
Yeah, this, just because you approve this doesn't mean that's happening. This is just budgeting for it because it was in the retreat.
We're groaning up here, Alan.
I did too.
Tell us how handsome we are.
If I thought it would do any good, I would. If I thought it would do any good, I would.
Yeah.
How in the world can construction be five, over five hundred dollars a square foot?
It is.
I mean, it's a damn big, it's a. It's, it's a big, open building.
Place to sleep, isn't it?
Take that for twenty-dollar cost.
Alan, when you said room for expansion, so it's four bays originally, correct? Is that what you said? Okay, so how much room for expansion are we talking about? How many more bays or?
If you build the bays large enough to have two ambulances back in the back, I mean, that's eight bays, but you could add.
Eight bays, okay, thanks.
You could do all kinds of things with it, sheriff's office annexes, I mean, just all kinds of stuff to do with it. And it wouldn't cost that much more down the road, it would be paid for.
But we're still looking at Western, but that's wrong, right?
Yeah, yeah, southern. Well, Cleveland's new, I mean, the Western is the newest, that was done after the Rockwell.
Well, I think there are, I think there are some other discussions about the South. Okay, okay, all right, well, we're not making that decision tonight, we'll vote on it when it comes. I heard, I heard grumbling out of my right ear. And I, I thought we should stop and back up on that.
All right.
So, all right, we're fine, thank you. Next page, please.
So the next page is for, this is our, discuss the education expenses. For Rowan Salisbury Schools, the state and local estimates, that's Anna's estimates. We're expecting Rowan Salisbury Schools' average daily membership to, to lose a hundred and eighty-six students. Kannapolis City School to gain thirty-seven students, and Charter Schools to gain three hundred and fifty-three students. Next page. Sure. Okay, okay, can you go back one? Oh, can you go back one, Aaron? The reason for showing you this is that the, the, next page.
Well, how do we get the, where did the minus one eighty-six?
I pulled the, from the state, I'm able to pull an estimated ADM for next year. And that's how we've typically budgeted for our ADM. On the Charter Schools, there's no numbers like that out there. The state doesn't provide that information as an estimate. So I reach out to each school system and ask them where their current charter school numbers are at. And so then I just used where they were currently at, and that was going up from last year by the three fifty-three. Because that's the best number I have at this time to estimate charter school students.
But even if Rowan Salisbury School ends up being flat, at zero, we still pay them.
We're gonna, yeah, whatever we're budgeting here is what we're going to use to go forward, yeah.
We pay them on the actual.
We pay them based on what we.
Of the charter schools.
The charter schools, they pay the charter schools based on actual students that go there. We, we haven't changed our budget, we use our estimates for, to pay them. We don't know what enrollment's going to be until probably sometime in, like, August, late, like, mid-August, and so the budget's already approved by that point.
So the state, so the state is projecting a hu, minus a hundred and eighty-six?
And so the reason we show you that, next slide, is that, you know, the funding will be on a per pupil, or we go back, we actually backed that out this year. But the, the budget's recommending two, two thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars per pupil, which is a nine four, nine point four percent increase per pupil last year. So if this budget's passed, you'll be passing an approximate nine point four percent increase in education funding per pupil. Next slide. And so what that means for this, the one slide is Rowan Salisbury, the next slide is Kannapolis. School system and the Charter Schools. What that means for the Rowan Salisbury Schools is for the operating, there's an approximately three point two million. And that's for the, what we agreed upon mid-year for teacher supplement. And you're probably thinking, well, how did that, you know, end up equalling nine point four percent? It didn't, that's what we used, we figured out what that was, then we applied it to the remain, to the other two schools. So they would be treated equally on an operational basis, which means the Kannapolis City Schools and the Charter Schools are getting, getting a higher percentage increase based on the projected number of pupils. The capital's remaining the same. The debt service, some of the debt is dropping for this upcoming year. We're adding new debt. It's one point five million dollars. That's for roofs, it's approximately sixteen million dollars worth of roofs they requested. And then the debt service for the fifty-five million dollar new school, wherever that, you know, once the, the school system decides to move forward on that, is also being budgeted. That's not new, we're carrying that over from last year. Which means the total budget for Rowan Salisbury Schools is going up, going up four point two million dollars. From forty-nine million, six hundred and four thousand to fifty-three million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Next slide. Kannapolis. The Kannapolis City School, their operations are increasing from two point seven, two point seven million to three point one million. And then the Kannapolis capital is going up a little bit. Then there is new debt service for Kannapolis, and that's for their elementary school renovations. And then, as you see, their debt service is decreasing from twenty-four to twenty-five. So the total increase for Kannapolis City Schools is three hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then what we're estimating for the Charter Schools is one million, fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. And like Anna was saying, I mean, that is estimated because ultimately Rowan Salisbury School System pays the Charter Schools based on how many students they have. And I think that's the last slide, no, there's one more. Debt service, okay, I have to put my glasses on for this. So this is, this is just a summary of our current debt. And it shows you what the, the new debt is, will have, you know, new. So currently, we have radio equipment, one point seven million, nine hundred and ninety thousand. Rowan Community Ag Center, two million, eight hundred and sixty thousand. I'm not, I won't read all these out to you, but I will point out, the new telecom project is estimated at seven hundred and thirty thousand. The new South EMS station, which is, is one payment, estimated eight hundred and forty-three thousand. The RCC, I won't read that, that's, that's older. The RCC bond, we're still budgeting for that, that project hasn't started yet. Then you go down the new Ro, Rowan Salisbury School, that's five million, that's the big, the fifty-five million. And then the new RSS roofs, that's for the sixteen million dollars worth of roofs. And then the new Kannapolis elementary, elementary school renovation, two hundred and fifty-four. And then the issuance cost, and then you have our airport. So that will be the total amount of debt service that is in this projected budget.
When will the central office be paid for?
That's still quite a, yeah, it's still quite a ways out, yeah. I'll have to look that up to tell you that, but I can email you that. Yeah.
Anna, have we taken down the money for the hangars yet?
So, we've drawn down some money for the hangars related to design and all that kind of stuff, but we have not. There's not been any, we've only paid one invoice, right?
Well, I was going to say, I know one of them's already here.
Yeah, I think we've only paid one invoice for.
To KMD?
Yeah, we got one invoice.
We just got the first invoice today from Talbot Bright, the.
Construction management.
Construction management.
But there's been some drawn down for design and things like that, yeah.
And that's on a fifteen-year payback also?
And with that, that, that ends the conclusion of the, the budget presentation. The budget has also been presented to, to each board member, it's in your office. You're all familiar with how it looks. It's been presented to the clerk to the board, the clerk to the board. Will notify the newspaper, I'm notifying you now. You've got a copy, have you gotten your copy? Okay, so you'll get your copy tonight. We've met up, and, and that's, you know, meeting all the statutory obligations for that. Would ask that if the board would consider scheduling a public hearing for the budget at the first meeting in June, that way, if the, if the, we'll give the board, if you want to adopt it at the first meeting in June, you can. Or you'll have up until the last day of June to adopt it if you want to. But if the board would consider scheduling a public hearing tonight, we'll get that in the paper tomorrow. And then the board wants to adopt it, it'll be ready to be adopted at the first meeting in June.
Need a motion for that? So, bud? Hi?
We have to give a time? I think before, we would have our meeting, and then we would recess and come back at six for the public hearing. Haven't we done that in the past? On the first meeting?
Let me look at the calendar.
Like, do we need to set the time of the meeting?
Yeah, need to.
If you want it to be different than three P M.
So what I'd ask the board to do, frankly, I got a personal issue. I know, I know, I know, I know. I paused for your comment, so I was setting you up. I, I may be out of town the third for a, a relative high school graduation in Florida. And, and, and that's a three o'clock meeting, so we would be scheduling to, Mike, to your point, recessing until six o'clock and coming back. Or we could just schedule to have, to approve the budget on the next meeting, which would be the seventeenth of June.
I probably won't be here that day.
Well, I'm going to be at both meetings, so it's whatever y'all want to do.
Do it on the tenth?
Just special call meeting?
Sure.
To approve?
Come on the tenth.
Yeah, so, but you would need to schedule, well, that could be, if you wanted to have the public hearing on the third, because that's just hearing comments from the public, which is statutory required before you adopt it. You could do that on the third, or you could wait and do that on the tenth. Then after you, you know, if you have the public hearing on the third, you can adopt it any day you want to. You can adopt it that day, the fifth, the sixth, the tenth, you know, whatever day you, you want to. You just can't adopt it until after you have that public hearing.
Um, yeah. About the twenty-fourth. Or you're out of town seventeen, Mike?
Uh, yes.
And then after that as well?
You mean, the eighteenth? I come home on the eighteenth.
Oh, you do, okay. We can do twenty-fourth. Call.
I'm, I'm good on the twenty-fourth, yeah.
Twenty-fourth? All right, so we'll have a public hearing on the third at three o'clock. And then we will call a special, Sarah's over there, taking down special call meeting. Can we agree to do a six o'clock for the benefit of the public? Okay, six o'clock on the twenty-fourth. Can we start, Brett? Six o'clock.
We won't vote on it that night.
All right, anything else we want to?
All right, the tenth was a special call meeting.
No, we're not going to do the tenth. All right, thanks, Aaron, anything else for Aaron?
Nope.
All right. All right, you're up.
All right, so looking at cumulative expenditures through April, we're up sixteen point six million or twelve point five percent, still well within budget. Going to cumulative revenues through April. We are up one point one million or point six eight percent. Still trending in line with where we projected to be. Cumulative property tax, this is through March, we're up eighteen point seven or twenty point six percent. And then looking at cumulative sales tax through January, it was up three hundred and twenty-nine thousand or one point three percent, they're trending right along that same line as last year. And looking at the month over month, January was up a hundred and thirty-seven over last January or four point one three percent. All those sales tax numbers are trending right in line with where we've, where we've been. They're not, they're not trending up anymore, they're just kind of staying flat, which is what the state's told us. Flat, which is what the states told us, um, to expect.
And there was an odd reporting.
Yes, that's what's happened there, we had, uh, they had a correction, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um, and then investments, I forgot about those. Yeah, um. So our investments are still very strong, um, so we're currently with treasuries and agencies, um, averaging around four point four percent interest on those. Um, the capital management trust, um, is, we're getting an average yield of five point two four percent, that's through, these are all through March. Thirty-first, we still have a small amount in a money market, um, and then the paragraph right below the chart there shows, um, our total interest. The date through March, um, the majority of it being in the capital manager trust, um, mainly just because the interest rate's better, and it's a quick, we can get that money in one day if we need to, so. Um, but yeah. Everything's strong, yeah.
I mean, annualize that trust at five point two four. That, but that one seventy-seven is like our checking account, so we're not gonna earn five point two.
Correct, yes, it's like your, yes. It, it's, it is a big savings account, is basically what it is.
That, that's, uh, interest earned through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Is from the trust, total six point seven million dollars, that's unbelievable. County is earning. Again, thank.
And that's across, I mean, that is across all funds, that's not just general fund, but still, yeah.
That is a, a source of funding that just. Years ago was.
It's nothing, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, i- it is, I mean, it, so as the rates, you know, we may in the next twelve months see rates start going down, and that'll affect us as well, but. Just wanna remind, uh, the public, you know, these two folks and Aaron, um, called in a consultant to look at. Where we are and, and where we have our money, um, parked, and this was. They've done, and so it's a huge benefit to the community. Alright, anything else? Uh, hold on, red flag? Are you gonna tell us if there's one?
I, I will, I promise you, I, well, I'll see what I can do, yes.
No closed session, Jay? Greg, do you have a motion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you.